Guys, welcome to the work session. Item number one on the work session is the presentation by Ashton Sawyer, Eagle Scout Project, the Beach Tree Trail. Come on to the front, guys.
Ashton, it's all you.
All right. Hello, I'm Ashton Sawyer. I'm very close to finishing and becoming an Eagle Scout, and I would like to present and propose my project to the council because it needs approval from the council, and I would like to request funding from the council for a part of it. So what the idea is, is we're going to, me as the leader and the scouts providing labor, to set it up is we are going to put tree identification signs down at the Fairhope Beach Tree Trail because there's, by my reckoning, 25 unique different tree species that are from all different parts of the country and some that are from actually different parts of the world. And I think it'd be nice to highlight the biodiversity that's down there. And it's just a, it's just a nice tourist location. Like, it's a beautiful place. I run down there as a cross-country runner. It's beautiful down there, and I just want to give back to the city. And I think that'd be really good for my Eagle project. But what I do have to do is to decide, and I want the council to weigh on this, is if you want the identification of the trees on the plaques to have just metal written on them, the name of the tree, scientific name of the tree, or a QR code engraved on the plaque that takes to a more in-depth information about the tree.
Counsel?
I guess, first of all, welcome to the City Council meeting, Ashton, and glad you're here, and I like the idea of the project. Would the QR code option still have the other information as well?
Oh, yes, just the name of the tree and stuff, yes, yes.
I don't know, I think people might like that in this day and age.
You're, so you're saying?
It's still gonna have the Latin name plus the nickname, plus the QR code.
On the plaque, plus the QR code?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, because we have certain, maybe older population that might not be using QR codes.
Yeah.
And, but still might want the, to know what kind of tree it is and what they're looking at.
Mm-hmm.
I think that sounds like a great project. Corey?
Sounds like a plan, man.
Have you priced anything like this yet? Any ideas?
So for 25 unique plaques, without, the cheapest possible option, without any, with just the writing on it, like, no QR code engraved, would be around, like, $140-ish dollars. That can go up to, like, $200, depending on the quality of the plaque.
Is that per tree?
No, for, like, the whole shebang. Because we're providing wood, tools, labor to set it up. We're gonna go down there, identify, like, make sure what trees I have are the trees they are in the right location, and set them up. So that's what the Eagle project's about. It's about leadership, and I have to lead younger scouts and other people to help set it up. We just need a way to get the plaques. But yeah, you can get them relatively custom plaques pretty cheap on Amazon, or you can get them locally sourced with the QR codes. The price ranges a lot depending on the material and quality of it. But it can go up to, like, for the whole thing, it'd be about $400, $500. Or you could have them locally made with Paige Crawford. And just have to decide what the benefits are to, like, like, is it worth, demographic-wise, to put the, go through the effort for the QR codes?
I don't think that's that much, I think it's worth it.
Where you, tell me your path again. Where are we? Where are the trees?
The, like, down by the wharf, the pier, like, the area. Like, around the duck pond.
North beach.
North beach, yes. And we can extend, we can do other areas, too, like, around there, south, too.
I just wanted to make sure I knew where you.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, I think the QRS ones would be better because a lot of kids and families be very educational.
I think that sounds like a great idea. I'm all in favor of giving you some council financial support to get this underway. And obviously, I'd like them to look as nice as possible, so I don't, I think the QR code would be great. And so you just kind of tell me if we're talking 500 or more. Yeah, that'd be all right. Okay, yeah, that'd be wonderful. I think, I think it's a great project. I really appreciate you bringing it to us. Thank you for taking interest in doing it, and congratulations on your progress and getting to where you are right now in the program.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions from the audience? All right, thank you for, appreciate the opportunity.
Absolutely, thank you. Best of luck to you.
Good job, Ashton.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna kind of go out of order. I'm gonna let the beach volleyball discussion go next. Is there anybody here to discuss beach volleyball? Please.
I can discuss beach volleyball.
So this was brought up at, can y'all hear me okay? It doesn't sound like this is on. So this was brought up at rec board meeting, the beach volleyball. And I'm not sure, Councilman Martin, if you were there or not to talk, or if you heard about it.
I have.
There's an organization who would like to hold beach volleyball down at the beach, on the two courts that are there. They would also probably add an additional one, they said. But we really don't have a fee structure set up for that, so they were trying to see if there would be an opportunity for them to do that. They wanted to do it possibly twice this summer, maybe one in July and one in August.
And you should set this up where?
Down at the beach, the North Beach, on the beach there. Probably, they said, maybe 20 cars, you know, several teams, and just wanted to see if the council wanted to look at that, establish a fee for it.
Do we rent that North Beach, the beach portion now?
We don't re, we do not rent the beach. We rent the pavilion. I think it's $150 for three hours. We don't rent the beach itself, though. So if you want to do it like a franchise agreement, where you get 20% back, but I don't know even what they charge, or if you just wanted to do a beach rental, like we do the pavilion.
Did the same kind of 50 bucks an hour, kind of?
Like we do a field rental.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they were talking of a flat fee, that some, some number came up of a flat fee, 500, but we haven't come to any.
Yeah.
Then there was a talk about the cars and parking, would they pay coming through the booth, all that. You see, if they don't have a sticker, they would have.
They would have, still have to pay coming through the booth.
Right, all those things that need to be logistic-wise.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I don't see any problem with giving them that opportunity. You know, I'd hate to decide on a fee in here without really knowing what their setup is like. I mean, you know, saying $500 seems like a reasonable fee, but at the same time, if there's no money in what they're doing, that might seem excessive.
I think they charge probably the teams to enter their competition. So, and they probably would pass that fee along.
Okay.
And $500 was, I think, discussed at rec board.
Okay. And I think that's, I think it's worth a shot, see how it works out. I mean, it's probably an underutilized beachfront area, anyway. I don't know, guys, y'all got any heartburn about it?
I think it's worth trying.
Yeah, I don't have any heartburn. We just gotta set up some type of fee structure. You know, that's it.
If y'all are good with the 500, then what we'll do is we'll bring that back to the next meeting in a format where y'all can approve it.
Well, yeah, I can't say if I'm good with it. I'd have to get all the, I don't know all of the details. How many teams, again?
They didn't say. It's just gonna depend on how many signs up.
I don't have enough information from them. They need to come in and talk to us.
Yeah, but I, but I'm guessing, yeah, I guess the question would be in a, I guess, do they do this in other areas locally?
They had done it at the beach.
And if they do, how many teams do they normally get in a tournament?
These are gonna be smaller tournaments. They're not gonna be larger tournaments.
I mean, I guess if they're saying they're only expecting about 20 cars, it's not gonna be that many. Unless beach volleybawers are real into carpool. But.
Yeah, I don't think there's gonna be that many teams. This is what they would consider a smaller tournament.
A lot of this beach volleyball is just two-person teams also.
Okay, so, I mean.
Depends on how many teams they have. That's the difference, yeah. Depends on how many teams they have, yeah.
I'm all in favor of giving it a shot. I think 500 seems reasonable, assuming there's nothing kind of outside of it.
I'll try to get some additional information and pass it along so we can get something on the next agenda.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect, thank you, Mayor. All right, next up, six-month financial review. Take it away, Kim.
Today, I have our auditors here to actually, to go over our audit for 2022. And then after they complete and y'all have questions about our audit, then I will go over our six-month review of our financials. So y'all do have with you, they brought with them is our audit in their presentation. So anyway, I have Rick and Lee from Warren Avery.
Thank y'all very much. We appreciate y'all's time and allowing us to come present to y'all. Each of y'all should have three documents. You should have a copy of the, the financial audit of the city, which is the larger of the three. Another bound one is the single audit, and then a document like this that has a PDF of the presentation we're about to do as well as some required communications that we'll go over later. It's a lot of information. We're gonna go over it fairly quickly. So if you just have anything you want us to slow down and dive into, just let me know. Obviously, there's, there's more people than Rick and myself that work on this. My name is Lee Parks, and I serve as the engagement member. We also have a lady named Jennifer Williams at our Atlanta office who kind of heads up the single audit or the compliance portion. And Rick's gonna discuss that part. We also have an IT team that comes in and does an information technology control review as part of the audit. And that's headed up by Scott Pruitt out of our Birmingham office. This is a copy of our most recent peer review letter. We're required to present this to y'all. And it's just the, the most recent one we just got. It's dated January 4th, 2023. They reported no significant weaknesses or any issues. So that's the equivalent of a clean opinion. And moving on to the, the next slide, we're gonna, this is what's known as the auditor's report. And what I wanted to talk about is this has changed. This is, this is on page one of the, of the big binder. The format in our profession has changed this year. They've moved the opinion up front and center to be the first, first thing discussed. Previously, it had been maybe on the third or fourth paragraph. And as you see, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects. The respective financial positions, the government activities, business-type activities, aggregate presented component units in each major fund and the remaining fund information of the city as of September 30, 2022. And that's, that's basically what's called an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. All right, any questions, we'll move on. You know, the big thing, I guess the main thing that changed this year is the sanitation fund function got pulled out of the general fund and was made its own separate business-type activity fund. So as we go through and talk about some, some changes from year to year, that's gonna be probably one of the bigger things that, that caused. So this is just a, an overall snapshot of the total assets, liabilities, and net position of the city compared from 22, compared to 2021. As you see, total assets deferred outflows were 276 million, total liabilities were 52 million, and net position was 223 million. All right, moving forward, just gonna hit on some high points on each section. Total cash was 69.2 million at 9:30, 2022. This was up approximately 1.1 million, I mean, I'm sorry, 11 million from the previous year. And that's just a result of the overall increase in revenue across the board as well as a $1 million increase in the American Rescue Plan funds received. Capital assets were 190 million. This is up approximately 10.8 million from the previous year. City had about 18.7 million in current-year fixed asset additions and had a related depreciation of about 7.8 million. So the net of those two is a result of that change. And you can find the detail of all that in note six. That's on page 38 and 39. It kind of breaks it down into various categories. Customer deposits were 2 million. I know that this is a small variance, but it decreased 263,000. But I wanted to bring this up because this has been a finding for, for many years that there was an issue with the deposits per the general ledger not agreeing to the subsidiary ledger. And the city spent a bunch of time and many hours to research this and correct this. And so this decrease is a result of the correction and getting the two to be reconciled. So just wanted to bring that up because that's, that is something that has come off the list of findings. Unearned revenue increased, it's about 3.3 million, increased roughly 2.1 million, primarily driven by the $1 million in the American Rescue Plan funds that were received and as well as about $1 million in Go Messa funds that the city received in 2022. Notes payable, 2.6 million, increased about 1.3 million during the year. The city entered into a note payable with United Bank during 2022 for purchases of capital equipment. So that's the, the driving force there. Total, your remaining direct placement bonds totaled about 9.6 million. This is down roughly 1.7 million from the previous year, and that's just a result of the current-year debt service requirements. These last three, OPEB, net pension liability and deferred outflows, they fluctuate year to year depending on whatever actuarial valuations RSA provides the city. So, you know, there's, there's hard to draw a correlation of why it went up or went down. It's just based on the funds that are held by RSA and what they, they say the, you know, the valuation of that liability would be. This next slide is a pie chart that shows you the breakdown of your, your net position. The largest component is net investment in capital assets. And this is the commonly, the largest one. This is, represents the total capital assets, net of accumulated appreciation, and net of related debt. So city fairups was 179 million, or roughly 80% total net position. The next category is restricted, which is anything restricted by external or third-party. This typically is bond, bond funds or external grant funds that are received. This totaled 5 million, roughly 2%. And then the, the remaining amount is what we call unrestricted, which is 39.9 million, or roughly 18%. Now, in this 39 million, there are, there's a category called designated, and that's a designation that done by the, the city council, whether they've, you know, committed funds to, for a particular purpose. Anytime you do internal, that's, that would be a designation, and an external party would be a restriction. All right, we're gonna look at the, the income statement side. And in this first, first part, we're just gonna focus on governmental funds and not talk about the utility funds. Sales tax, you see, was 13.6 million, and that's up about 1.9 million from the previous year. And that's just from growth and people getting back and driving more and spending more. As you see, everything else is pretty much in line. Intergovernmental revenue, which is revenue received from, from other government entities, was 4.5 million. This is down 6.6 million from the previous year. And this is primarily due to the decrease in FEMA funds related to Hurricane Sally. Charges for services is 4.7 million. This is down 1.9 million, and this is due to the movement of the sanitation department over into the sanitation fund. And we'll see the, the flip side of that variance when we talk about business-type activities. And then other revenue was 3.4 million, and this is down about 800,000 from the previous year. And this is related to the insurance proceeds that the city received during Hurricane Sally. General government, we're gonna move on to the expense side. So general government expenses were approximately 7.9 million. This is down roughly 8.6 million from the previous year, and this is the, due to the, mostly for the Hurricane Sally cleanup expense that happened in 2021 that wasn't there in 2022. Public works, 5.1 million, down 2.4 million. That's due to the sanitation fund being moved over. And then capital outlay, 6.4 million. This is up about 1.6 million, and this is just related to, this fluctuates depending on the current-year capital asset purchases. All right, moving on to the, the business-type activities or enterprise funds. Electric fund, it was, total revenue was 20.4 million. This is actually down 1.4 million from the previous year, and that's a result of the, the rate stabilization fund that happened in 2021. Wasn't, wasn't around in 2022. And then, as you can see, sanitation fund had a 2.7 million dollar revenue compared to zero from the previous year. On the expense side, really the one that jumps out, the natural gas, was 7.6 million, that's up about a million five. And that's just related to the, the increased price in the, the gas that was purchased. And then, as you can see, the sanitation fund as well. That's the, that increase. And I know I just went through that probably super fast, so if there's any questions on the financial audit, if not, I'm gonna turn it over to Rick, and he's gonna talk about the single audit component.
Thank you. Thank you, Lee. Thank you, counsel. So what Lee was just talking about, like he said, is all included in the big white book, the bound financials. What I'm about to speak to you about is included in the smaller book with, I think it's got a little bit of a blue cover on it. That's the single audit report. And the driver for, I don't know how that jumped around. So the driver for all the information that Lee talked about was in the financial statements. The driver for that report that you see there is whether or not an entity expends over 750,000 of federal funds in a given year. If they do, they have to have what's called a single audit. And the single audit is, is really twofold. It focuses on federal expenditures, and it requires a reporting and an opinion on the internal control of our financial reporting, and it requires an opinion on the applicable compliance requirements. And so any federal funds that you expend have a specific set of compliance requirements that have to be tested with respect to those funds. So for the year, City of Fairhope had, in their schedule of expenditure of federal funds this year, was about $5.1 million. And that's down about $4.5 million from the prior year. You, you heard Lee allude to it as he went through the course of the financial statements. That's, the majority of that's FEMA-related. The fewer dispersments related to FEMA makes up the most of that, that decrease. In fact, FEMA in 2021, the, the federal funds in FEMA were 7.9 million. And in 2022, it was 3 million even. So actually, 4.9 of that 4.5, so 100, about 10% of that reduction is based on the amount of FEMA. We're gonna talk a little more in detail about what those funds are actually made up. So you see that big blue one is, that's the FEMA money of about $3 million. Worth noting is that in the current year, current-year projects in that FEMA money, I think it was the Fairhope docs, it's $296,000 of that money is current-year projects. Mostly, when you have a schedule of federal expenditures, it's treated not on an accrual basis, as the financial statements are, but as a cash basis. So it's, it's more like your tax return. Generally speaking, it has to have happened in that year to be picked up on that schedule of federal expenditures. In the case of FEMA, though, it's very different. It has to do with obligation, obligation of funds, not always expending of the funds. So of that 3 million, 296 was expended in the current year, in 2022. 1.2 million of that money was expended in a prior year, but not obligated by FEMA, meaning that some of the reporting and things have to be complete. And so it was obligated in this past year. 1.2 million of it was that. And then 1.5 of that $3 million was based on FEMA changing the match percentage from 75% to 90% in 2022. Now, of course, those monies were from 2020, 2021, and 2022. But when they changed that percent, that's 1.5 million. And even a, a little smaller portion is where they, FEMA had a, a smaller match on a little piece of that that they had to correct. But that 1.5 drove it up to, is, is the change in the match. The remaining funds are pretty consistent as they have been in prior years or in, in the most prior, recent prior years. COVID funding of 144,000. Emergency watershed protection program of about 641,000. That's up from prior year. Gulf Coast oil spill impact program, 855,000, up from prior year. And ALDOT airport improvement, 218,000, pretty consistent. The remaining other is various other smaller grants that totaled 270,000. And so this, this total number is, and this, this is a pie chart representation of the schedule of federal expenditures. This is what's required to be submitted to the federal audit clearinghouse. And if there, if there are no questions on, on the single audit, then I'll move on quickly to walk through the required communications. So we're required to express opinion on the financial statements. And we're also required to report on internal control and to let you know if anything about the scope or, or our planned audit timing had changed since the beginning of the engagement on the engagement letter. And, and none of that has changed. Also, anything that, all the significant accounting policies. Oh, this, this reminds me, I meant to mention that, that little tiff about the FEMA funds that were obligated in prior year, there's also a note to that. Anything you ever wonder about in financial statements or, or in the schedule of federal expenditures, there's, there's always a related note, so you can go to the, go to the back and see it. But all the significant accounting policies are illustrated in note one of the financial statements. That's the book that Lee was talking about. No transactions that we examined did not have authoritative guidance, and all accounting estimates and disclosures appear reasonable and complete. So our professional standards require that we let you know of all known and likely misstatements identified through the audit, other than those that are clearly trivial. There was a listing along with the required communications provided. There were no difficulties with management during the audit, and the management rep letters dated March 29th. That's where management tells us, March 29, 2023, that's where management tells us that as of 9:30, 2022, and the date thereafter up until we issued the report, which was on March 29th, that there was nothing that would have changed the financial statements for a reasonable user of the financial statements. And I think that we are going to talk next about the findings and management's responses. There were no material weaknesses noted. One thing worth noting, before we move off that single audit, is that the City of Fairhope is still a low-risk auditee. And that's based on the not having recent findings with their major programs in the last recent years were required to test a major program. The City of Fairhope is, is still a low-risk auditee. That's, that's pretty recent. That's in the last three years that they've managed to attain that status. And the accounting through the course of that $10 million swing in FEMA grants certainly puts most people at, at risk for losing low-risk status because of the number of transactions. However, the City of Fairhope did not lose its low-risk status through that. I'm gonna let Lee talk to you about the.
Yeah. And I think one thing to keep in mind is that regardless of the size, some grants are easier to deal with than others. FEMA is not, is one of the more complex and, and difficult to not only manage but to, to do the single audit side. So the letter that Rick just mentioned is, is on that last tab, the actual official communication. And then you'll see the, all the corrected misstatements that, that management made. The middle tab is what we're, is what we're about to go over is the reportable conditions. As Rick mentioned, there were no material weaknesses. Material weaknesses is the, the more significant of the two. And then you have the significant efficiency is, is less than a material weakness, but it's, it's still important enough to communicate to the governing board. The one significant efficiency we had was, had related to capital assets. Capital assets is, you know, it's a big one. It has a lot of moving pieces. It's a lot of moving pieces, and it's all, you know, it's usually one that will catch a city. So the finding was that there were, we noted several items that weren't recorded as current year additions in the current year on the governmental activities statement deposition. And there were also several, we noted that the city was had not been reconciling capital assets on a regular basis, and the majority of this was done at year end. We communicated with the city. They called up and they, you know, their plan is to continue to reconcile this on a regular basis. Kind of some history. So governmental funds, they book, when you expend funds on an asset, they book it in as an expense. And then you have to turn around and go through the capital outlay accounts and determine what should be capitalized on the general fixed asset account group. So it's kind of a double posting, and it makes it a little more difficult in nature. Whereas a business-type activity or a for-profit entity would pay cash and then hit an asset for the fixed assets. So you kind of, it's inherent that there's error prone. And given the fact that, you know, the number of additions being going through, it makes it easy to get behind. So, you know, once you get behind, it's harder to get caught up. And I think that's where we found this year. I think a lot of that had to do with staffing. Maybe, you know, I know they hired somebody mid-year to help, but having somebody do fixed assets part-time and have a lot of their responsibilities elsewhere is very difficult. Because fixed assets is probably the one that nobody wants to deal with, you know, because it is, you have to roll your sleeves up and get into it. So I think that, you know, maybe having more resources geared towards that would be what I would recommend. I don't see it being a problem. As you can see, this is a summary of four-year history of material weaknesses and significant efficiencies. As you can see, in 19, capital assets was on a significant deficiency. That was a totally different reason. There were some issues that had to be corrected and fixed. This is not rising to that level. But it's still something that needs to be, you know, needs to be addressed. But as you can see, in 2019, we had several material weaknesses and significant efficiencies. And in 2022, we just have the loan significant efficiency. The utility deposits and accounts receivable, those both came off. And as you can see, utility deposits have been on there since 2019. So that's good that that one rolled off. Yeah, and prior to that, there was significantly more. But that concludes our presentation. I'll be happy to address anything else. Would like to thank the mayor and Kim and her team for all their help. It's a. It looks, it looks like it's an easy task, but it is a lot of, lot of, lot of hours to get everything done.
We have to commend their patience.
Yes.
Because we often stress the patience that people do work for. So thank you for having such.
Not intentionally, just deadline driven, and, you know, everybody's under pressure. So, but no, Kim and her team are great to work with.
Counsel, y'all have any questions at this point?
Just make a comment that if you look at that four-year history, it has improved every year.
Yeah.
Over the last four years. And I think it was great to get utility deposits finally cleared up and cleaned off for once and for all. And the capital asset reconciliation on a regular basis, is that monthly? Is that quarterly? What do you define as regular?
I think he said he's different, but I would say that I would probably do it. Have somebody working on it on a monthly basis.
It's a reasonable.
If not, it gets caught, you know, it gets caught up, catch up on you.
It is reasonable to look at it monthly, but it goes back to staffing.
Yeah, it's hard to find.
Can you outsource that, Kim?
No, I don't.
It's not a third party that can.
You know, I think, well, you know, I want to be able to add into the budget another staff accountant. I think it's going to take another body. Right now, I have a staff accountant. As y'all know, I lost Islyn, and Islyn was doing capital assets, but with doing everything else every day, it was put off to the side. And so she was working on it after the year ended. And, you know, it was trying to go through a whole year of assets. And y'all see from approving stuff you approve, when you see a lot of, y'all see capital. So trying to do all that at year end, I mean, and still, it was January, February, she was still trying to enter them in and balance them. So right now, with her gone, you know, I've got this new staff accountant that's working on it. And that's, that's the goal, is to be able to have, you know, the staff accountant, you know, come in and be able to, that's what he can focus on, and he can focus on that. But it comes back to staffing, you know, having enough manpower to be able to do everything we need to do, and not work 50 hours every single week.
Is there, I'm going to ask a silly question. Is there any technology that would, AI stuff that would take the place of a staff that you can filter? That, that's just a question, so don't shoot. I mean, I don't know, that's.
There's some, there's some, but like you said, you book it over here, and you actually, because of the way the government system has to work.
It's redundant, I understand. I'm just wondering if there's some type of system that.
It's one of those things that the accountant, the finance department is having to reach out to other departments.
So it needs a lot.
Because they're getting these invoices for these projects, and then they have to go back and say, okay, these projects were related to this.
Okay.
And they're kind of grouping them together. So when I say that, oh, well, they didn't do the reconciliations on a monthly basis, it kind of simplifies, it makes it sound like they, you know, balancing your checkbook. This is a, this is kind of a complicated task.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
You know, technology helps. They have, they have a system they're using is, you know, is one that we recommend as far as an asset management system. You just have to compile the information over here to put it over there.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it was one that would take that.
No, there's really not, unfortunately. It's, like I said, if there's, if there's one that I see a city get caught behind on, this is.
Gotcha.
And in a city that's growing, such as Fairhope, there's a lot of, a lot of capital improvements that are constantly happening.
Yeah, and you review any accounts that you're trying to get through. And I'll give you an example of a journal entry that was done, you know, after year-end close was reviewing the accounts and found a trailer that was bought for $4,200. And as they review the account, they found this, you know, an added piece, an added piece, an added piece. Well, all those pieces added to it created a one trailer. Well, now that one trailer is capital, but it was coded to repairs and maintenance. It was coded somewhere else. And so, you know, from a, from a department is looking at, well, it was just $4,200. It didn't rise to the level to, you know, put it into capital, and maybe it wasn't budgeted in capital. I have money over here, and, you know, it was just 42. But then when they got it, they added different parts, you know, to it. Connected, bolted it to that trailer. Well, then that makes it a complete asset that's over $500. And it takes manpower to go through there and analyze those accounts just to make sure there's nothing else. Maybe they're doing repairs to an office and thinking, oh, it's under that 5,000. And then when they start adding and adding here, they're, it blows up to $5,500. Okay, well, now we have to recognize that as a capital improvement. So it does take manpower to review all that.
Thank you.
Mr. Bennett, any questions?
Nope.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much, we appreciate it.
All right, so now we're moving on to current year citing. So my first slide is to talk about cash balances. And as you can see, you know, even just went over our audit, and you can see general fund, how improvements we've made in general fund and general fund cash, where you can see, you know, from, you know, 21, March of 21, where you have 13 million, and then March of 22, you know, 25 million, and then where we are today. And, you know, and sometimes that picture in March, you got to realize we just collected all our property types for the year, you know, and we don't collect it. You know, that's going to last us to the end of the year, so that necessarily means that's how we're going to end the year. But that's as a snap picture in March, that's where our cash. But you can still see that how we're improving. And, you know, my theory is it was back in when COVID, you know, our, we still had a lot of people going to Walmart buying toilet paper, but the city kept our expenses down along with trying to get vehicles in. You know, the assembly lines were struggling. And so that's, that's really where you're seeing some cash built up to. You can see, like on the utilities where gas, you know, they've got a trend up, but nowhere near what, how general fund operated. You can kind of see some flatness in the electric department, where you see a decrease in water, where water went from, you know, 12 million down to 8 million. We're doing projects. They're blowing and going and, you know, working on water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure. So I will be coming to y'all, and I'm hoping by the end of June to talk about line of credit for the water and sewer because of the projects. We put that in the budget to have a line of credit of 15 million. And so I'll be coming back to discuss cash flow with the water and sewer department. Sanitation, so that's new. We started it as a separate fund in '22, which we discussed it as the audit. But that way, we can isolate and really look at sanitation as a whole to be able to look at their revenues and their expenses. And so this snapshot right here kind of shows where we are. But as of today, that's not the same cash I have that's in the bank. The Rebuild America and the Motorfield, those are funds that come from the state. So those are the gas taxes collected by the state. And we use those funds also for our resurfacing program. Capital Projects Fund, those, what you're seeing there is we received in advance is a Go Mesa grant that's right at $1 million. That's the Triangle property. So that's where you see the difference between last year and this year, an increase in those funds. But it's very rare that we get a grant in advance of its spending. Most of the grants are, majority of the grants are reimbursement. But the Go Mesa funds was received in advance. Impact fees, you can see they're staying pretty flat. And we have projects, what's going to come out of this, what will come out of this fund is, you know, the ball fields that was just finished. I'll be transferring money out of there to go into the capital improvements fund to reimburse for those ball fields that just got finished. The municipal capital improvements fund, that money actually comes from the state. So that money usually will stay flat. What you see a decrease there is we use some money from there to pay for the tennis court that's at Coyle Creek. We use money from there to pay for that, those.
Pickleball.
Now it's turned into the pickleball fields. And our insurance fund is staying pretty flat. You can see where there was an increase from '21 to '22. Those were improvements that y'all made into the, to the plan where we changed our prescription program. And we changed some stop laws, so you can see how that helped build the plan. And then we have some, you know, other funds. So you can see a total that we went from last year to this year, this snapshot from 64 million to 71 million. So you have any questions on cash?
I just had a few thoughts on it. And I think y'all have been conservative, and I know you've done a great job getting the maximum interest rate you can find out there on our excess deposits. So I think while we are in a strong cash position, I think it would be a good time to look at increasing the rainy day emergency fund. And I think it'd be a good time to also look at allocating some cash towards capital improvement projects. We've got a lot of projects in process. It'd be great to kind of wrap those up. But any of the smaller ones in particular that are on the radar, I think we ought to try to address as many as we can manage right now while we have the, have the capital available. Because we do have some larger, longer-term projects that we know we're going to need to really spend a significant amount of time planning and preparing for and discussing. So I'd love to get some of the low-hanging fruit cleaned up and knocked out while we have the money.
Oh, I totally agree.
Do you have an idea of what is in there that's sort of a very conservative cushion in the general fund, for example?
I mean, for your rainy day fund right now, it's.
Seven, right?
Yeah.
I was thinking, I mean, is it 10?
10, that's the number that I was thinking is to, is that we can transfer, we can bring in a resolution or maybe through ordinance. Lisa would be able to answer that. I think it's ordinance to make that a 7 million and go ahead and get that moved over. And then we could go ahead and have as a resolution to move, you know, whatever number y'all feel comfortable with. I mean, we can move 5 million into a capital project.
We don't want to really just move a number we feel comfortable with. I think we would like to be specific on that. We should kind of calculate what projects we want to do.
Right.
Come to a conclusion and use that particular number. I don't think we want to just throw it in the wind and say, you know. Make it rain, in other words. We don't want to make it rain.
But I am sort of asking for, what is that? As you threw out 5 million, just kind of, as you're tallying up projects you'd like to complete. What is a reasonable amount that we have that would not be putting us in any kind of financial tight spot?
And me and mayor can get together and look at the projects because she's going to know, you know, she knows a lot that's coming her way. That I may not be aware of. But, I mean, me and her can get together and really go through a list of, you know, projects that she sees coming down the pipes and probably some of the needs.
Yeah, so I think what Jimmy's asking, not to interrupt, if, do you already have a number in your mind of what, looking at these numbers, we can afford, we could tolerate, that wouldn't put us in a bind? If I'm not mistaken, Jimmy, I think that's.
Yeah, is it five or is it higher than that?
I think it's, I think it's higher than that. And I'll go back and look and actually run with the cash, looking at the cash flow of our lows. And I have to really look at kind of where we are in October compared to January. January, you look, you look cash-rich because of all the property types coming in, and really look at where that number can be and be able to, and knowing that, you know, let's put 3 million into our rainy day fund, which restricts that, and it helps that for the hurricane that comes and that we need, we need to tap into that cash. And then we can, then me and mayor can look at the projects that are on the horizon that she knows of and be able to bring back a recommendation.
Very good.
If you are, if they are good with that.
Yeah, I just think the, having, it's kind of what we went through last year, is having a number in place is great, but deciding on what to focus on and what not is a lot more difficult.
Well, I think we've kind of laid some of that work down.
We did, we did. We got a lot of things, I think, moving.
We have, and I think I talked to Councilman Robinson about this before the meeting. One thing that I'd like to see us do is kind of tidy up everything. There are things that we still need for Manly-Sacra Complex. There are things we still need, you know, lights on the pickleball courts that we're building. Some of those kind of things that are low-hanging fruit that we can kind of tidy all that up. Trainers project that we just approved, you know, last meeting. So some of those things that we can look at, kind of make a list for y'all, let you look at it, and kind of back into a number.
Yeah, because I mean, I think that's a great idea, and obviously something that I'd like to see us do sooner rather than later, because we have a couple of significant projects kind of on the horizon that we haven't really even planned for, which is finishing developing the K-1 property in this performing arts center that we've all talked about. And then ultimately, what we're going to do here.
Those are the two I'm thinking about.
I mean, so those are, those are big-ticket, big-money projects that are going to be significant, both in time, scope, and money. And so we can get a lot of those smaller things finished so that we can focus on those things. That would be great, and it's easier said than done.
I think we can come up with a pretty good list, though, because we're going to be, we're going to get some cost on the Triangle property, building out those trails, and we know we have the Go Mesa money, but there's going to be some additional cost there. Tonight, y'all will be approving the Clock Corner, you know, that's not budgeted. So there's some of those things that we're already checking off the list, but we can add them, add them to that list to bring back before y'all.
Could we come up with a name for the Clock Corner? Can we come up with a name for the clock corner?
The clock corner, no, we have not.
J. Robinson clock corner, that's what we decided? So I heard Jimmy say that, that sounds good to me, I'm all right with that.
We have, we have not come up with the name for it, no.
Possibly.
Don't, don't, don't put me down too early. All right, sorry, Kim, please go ahead.
Um, next, I just want to talk about the, the revenues, you know, some of our, you know, for general government, some of the larger revenues was your sales tax. You know, in the past couple of years, those, those numbers have been ranging, you know, around 14% increase. The past six months here, I'm seeing, you know, I feel like a stabilization that's going on in Fairhope where our sales tax number is currently right now at nine percent. Simplified seller's use tax, known as the Amazon tax, you know, we've been seeing that increase and increase. And I'll tell you why you've seen such a significant increase in the past couple of years is that the state made a change to that law. And so where it's called now is a marketplace facilitator. And I've probably spoke with this about, so eBay, eBay before didn't collect a sales tax because, but they are a marketplace facilitator. So they, they now have to collect a sales tax, report it to the state. So any, any business that is, you know, is a marketplace facilitator online, now they have to collect that tax and submit it to the state. And then the state gives us our portion. They made a shift also from the amount of money that was going to counties versus cities. And so cities now are getting a larger percentage than the counties. And so that's what you're seeing is last year having a 62% increase is just the law being changed, tweaked a little bit. Where we're getting a little bit more of the tax and more tax being collected. So right now, we're at 24% greater than what it was last year. And lodging tax, that, you know, that goes back to what was going on during COVID. And now I think we're starting to just see some stabilization that's going on in revenues. It's still 11% higher than what it was last year. And these are the charts where you can just really see visually what's actually been going on with our taxes. And you can see what happened in, in 20, at first, when COVID hit, you can really see that dip and then, then it's been up since then. And it's really a one-month dip. And, and you can just see on simplified seller's use tax on this graph, you can really tell Christmas, you know, sales, what, what was actually going on there. And our lodging tax, this is just tourism. This is just, you know, where you can really see what our summer months do to the, the amount of tourism that's, that's coming to the city of Fairhope. And then just looking at revenues, I just want to be able to hit, hit some of the highs. You know, our property tax is increased, is six, 6.9%. And if you'll, you can really just see all the properties that have been developed over in the past two years. You know, it takes about two years for those property taxes to increase. And our local tax, you know, that's where you're, you're seeing just, you know, a big increase. I shouldn't say big increase, we're comparing this to budget, I'm so sorry. Where we are in our budget, where you can see on the local tax, we still have remaining 53%. But you got to think about the lodging tax, it's, the large percentage is that going to, that's going to come in our summer months. License and permits, we are almost completely to our budget of six months of the year. And so I believe Eric's probably talked about this when he was asking for a position. You can see where we've already been collecting our building permits are way up and that's, that's where you can see that. All the other departments, you can just really see, you know, that we're, we've collected or where we should be. Rents and interest in rents, the reason you're seeing that as a negative, we're over budget and that's due to interest rates. In our reserves where our interest rate is 4.25. So, and that's just because of the Fed funds have increased. So it looks like everything else looks pretty steady. So as a total for general government, as general fund, we still have left to collect 37% of our revenues for the year compared to budget. So we're on, we're on track or even better. Y'all have any questions on those, on the revenues? And then this chart's just showing you where our revenues, total revenues compared to the budget as a percentage. And you can compare where we were last year. So we're, as our expense, we still, we're good on the expense where it's, you know, if we're looking at really at 50% of our expenses compared to budget. So our, our expenses are looking good and then our, our revenues, we've done good on collecting our revenues at this point. Any questions? And, and general fund expense, and you can, you can just see here, if you look at what's compared to budget, where we are, you'll, you'll see, you know, I, I look at a department as long as we're at 50%. And as you look there, you know, you've got some departments that are, you know, much better at 60, at 60% of their budget is left to spend. And then the majority of them are over the 50%. You have any questions on any of those departments?
Is that, I mean, just looking at these expenses, obviously if we've been through 50% of the cycle and we have 50% or more, that's, that's good.
Yes.
Is that because, I mean, are, are there delays in those expenses or are we?
Probably struggling to hire people.
Saving money?
Well, we'll get to, we'll get to the employee section too, on, on wages. Some, some of it, some of it is, like if it was some trucks that were ordered, let's go to the building department. You know, they got 54% and they have some trucks that are to come in. Meter department, they, they, I know they still have a truck to come in. So you do have some departments that do have some capital that's still coming in and I, and I do have a slide on the capital. So, and you, and you, and it balances out too, where you may have some departments that's gotten close on some things, but then they've got a capital piece of truck that's needed to come in. But overall, they're looking good in their budgets.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll say this, I mean, I know in, in these meetings at least, whenever there's something presented that is over budget, I mean, maybe not 100% of the time, but a large majority of the time, whoever's presenting is already outlining what they're going to do to, to balance that out in their budget, which obviously makes, makes all this look a lot better.
Yes, yes. Do you have any questions on any of the others? So as a total for general fund, we still have 58% of our budget at, at the six month point of the year left.
Is the 300,000, is that the final debt service payment on that 300 agreement?
That is for the, that's related to the school.
Is that the last one?
We have, we have two more, we have this one and next year and then we'll be done. So you have any questions on general fund expenses? And here's the slide on capital. So what we've, what we have left in to spend. So we still have a lot of capital that's left to come in on equipment and, and on some capital improvements. Do you have any questions on this? And, and like, I spoke with Richard today, we have two pieces of equipment that's in the streets department. And we're expecting one piece, maybe it's going to come in June, we thought it was the end of this month. But within the next month or two, one piece and then another one, they're saying September. And those were two large items. So, so by the end of the year, we should have, hopefully have a lot of these equipments. Because we're starting to see things start to pick up and receive items in.
So, so that means we're a little bit, with the 70% with capital improvements left to spend, is, is that just because of not enough staff or?
On the, on the capital improvements?
Yeah, like.
On the capital improvements, it's just.
We not started on those particularly, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I got you.
Yeah, so the roof in this building is one of them.
Got you.
And so y'all just, uh, will approve that today, tonight?
Yes.
So that's a big, that's a big chunk out of this number here.
Oh, no, we'll do that, but yes, it's on the agenda.
Yes. So the next slide is the, is labor, where we are, where we are in labor. And you can see some departments because they're short, they're short. If you look at planning, how much they've got left remaining is 62%. So that goes back to positions, unfilled positions is what's going to throw these numbers that are over 50%. It could be that their overtime is down to, if they've got some departments that has overtime. So, I mean, that's really what you can see, is these positions that are unfilled. Do you have any questions on any of those?
That's a lot of, a lot of departments greater than 50%.
Yeah, wow.
Yes.
How many outstanding open positions do we have right now that we've advertised?
Say 16? That's it, that's it, 16?
And are all those general fund or are some of those utilities also? Yeah, I mean, it's a lot that are still open.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, Patricia?
Do you have any more questions on salaries?
No.
So we'll go over to util, to the utilities. And you see as gas fund revenue, you have to realize on, on gas fund is that, you know, you're going to have higher revenues in the winter months. They're going to sell more gas. Then it, it just starts slowing down. So if you see what we've got left, you know, remaining to collect on their revenues, 47%. So we're, we'll still have some more revenue to collect. And their expenses is, you know, right at where it should be. And also down there on that same slide, you're seeing their capital, where their capital is still, you know, we just still have some equipment to come in. And their infrastructure. Have a questions on gas? And electric turns around being the opposite of gas where you'll, the majority or, you know, will have larger revenues coming in the second half of the year compared to the first half of the year. And then their, their expenses is better, better. But part of that is their capital in there. So we had a lot budgeted in capital that has not been completed. And do you have any questions on that?
So they're still looking and then going down to vehicles and capital. I mean, it's, there's still a lot left to spend in electric for the last next six months.
Yes.
You're almost 9% of that budget.
And here's your, here's your water. Water department revenue, we do see where, you know, revenue on the water sales increases over the last six months of the year. And it just has to do with the hotter, hotter months due. And their, their expenses, they still have a lot, but that's capital. And you can see down there at the bottom part of the slide is the capital and the infrastructure that's still being completed. Do you have any questions on those for large? And waste, wastewater is very, is very similar. You know, revenues and expenses look good, but we do have some more infrastructure. And where you see a negative 24% on vehicles and equipment, they had a vacuum truck that was 400, I think 418,000 budget from the previous year that did not get rolled over. So when we have, you know, items that they're supposed to roll, we, we should roll over. And that was a vehicle that got missed in the rollover in the budget. But it was approved in 22. And so it's the amount of time it took for that vehicle to come in. So that's the reason for the, where you can see it looks, looks a little off. Do you have any questions on, on wastewater? And then sanitation fund, sanitation fund, you know, is looking good there based on their revenues, what they've got left to collect in revenues. And their, their expenses. And so we've, we received two garbage trucks this month, so that's in part of their capital. We received two of them this month. So they have actually, I believe have received by, by, as of last week, received all of their capital. I know we just, we just did two garbage trucks in. And then they're working, they're currently working on their, their capital improvement. Have any questions on sanitation? And then here's the sanitation, this, um, excuse me, this is the utility salaries as a group. And so you can, you can see where compared to the budget where they are too. And this is, you know, goes back to the positions not being filled or, or a lapse between turnover and getting a new person in the positions. Have any more questions? This is the end of my presentation, but I'm prepared. You know, if there's any questions y'all have, I know it was a lot. And if y'all have any questions afterwards or you want to email me or, please let me know.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
All right, Council, moving on on the agenda. Next up, we have committee updates. Councilman Martin?
We talked about the volleyball. Just a couple of things, we're swimming that Recreation Board has to come to a conclusion to as far as master swimmers and rack rates and things that we talk about as far as that's concerned. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Jimmy?
Nothing. Uh, Library Board doesn't meet again until June, so nothing.
All right, I don't have anything either. I will say that the, the Historic Preservation Committee did meet last week. I, I was not there, but they did, I think, put together a draft ordinance. And do we have that now, Hunter, or have they presented that to?
They have presented it.
Okay. Okay. So we'll be getting that and looking at that soon. All right, next, department head updates, come one, come all. And if you've got something on the agenda, let's go ahead and talk about it. But before I do that, Mayor Sullivan's got something she'd like to say.
I just wanted to announce officially tonight that we have two new superintendents. In the electric department, we are promoting Ben Patterson to the utility, to the electric superintendent. Ben, congratulations, yes. Glad to have him there. And also, and then we have Darryl Moorfield, who's here, who's joining us as the water and sewer superintendent. So we're excited to have both of them and look forward to great things. Thank you.
Congratulations to both of you guys and, and congratulations to us for being able to get you and, and put you in these positions. All right, now.
Good luck.
Committee updates, or sorry, department head updates.
Yes, Council, how are y'all doing?
Great, thank you, Richard.
To kind of follow up, and unfortunately, Councilman Burrell's not here. We kind of talked about cleaning up some of the rules of the road for the landfill drop-off. And one of the concerns was the frequency of accepting paint. So we did go back and revisit that. And we're going to, we're going to set that up for once a month, five gallons per visit. So, you know, that, hopefully that 60 gallons a year covers our citizens' needs on, on, on paint to be disposed of. And I also want to, we, we participated with the counties last week with the update on the recycle center that they're building down at the Magnolia landfill. And, you know, they basically have issued purchase orders and contracts, starting construction. And they're looking that, that that MRF will be open, they're saying April 1st, 2024. So we're excited about that, to have that resource. And one thing that they're going to do as part of this program is they're going to establish what they call charm sites throughout the county. And our Fairhope satellite courthouse will get one. And that stands for a center for hard-to-recycle materials. So there'll actually be a drop-off center there for, for paints, electronics, batteries, things of that nature. So we're going to have our citizens have a lot, a lot more availability to properly dispose of those items that are, are difficult to handle. And we really don't want placing the waste stream. Also, and it just kind of made me chuckle, as you know, y'all in the past couple of meetings have approved several surplus lists. We just are starting to close one of those sales today. There's still 22 more items to close, but as of today, $161,000. And the funniest one, Councilman Boone, is the travel lift at the Marina with 60 bids sold for $7,800. And that means, and I don't know if you know what I'm talking about.
The old, the really old one?
Yes, the, the thing that, that actually they used to move the ark originally, okay? And so that means somebody's going to have to haul that off and then leave us a check behind. money in versus spending it, so, but we're excited about that. Also, as you know, we've been undergoing the asbestos abatement at the K-1 center. I did present to the council president and mayor that we today, this morning, got our kind of final, final report. We built in and had bid a scheduled values for additional square footage. Turns out, there's quite a bit of flooring that had multiple layers that were not known until the first layer was pulled up and you found the second layer and on, and do have a change order for $6,000 to complete that project, and either A, if you're comfortable with acknowledging that we've got to allow that contractor to finish that work so that we can have the final certification, and just so you know, we do have complete certification and clearance on the basement, on the attic space with insulation and everything, but this remaining 3,160 square feet of flooring that was discovered under the flooring that they abated. Or if y'all are comfortable walking in on the agenda tonight, and we'll just go ahead and take care of that and close out, but either or, I just didn't want it to be an after-the-fact surprise, but we hope to probably by Friday be complete there and have all our final clearance and all that being sent to ADM, as well as being able to send it to the EDA, who is funding the K-1 grant for the redevelopment of that center. And very quickly, not to belabor anything, item eight on the agenda is the extension of our disaster debris contract, and I am 100% in favor of that. That is a pretty much boilerplate process. As you know, we competed, we did that a year ago, this would be extension one. Item number 10 is the roof on this building, which we discussed in detail at the last council's work session. Eleven is the Fairhope Clock Plaza, which again was discussed last work session. Item 12 is a budgeted item. We were beneficiary of a very fine truck chassis from our water and wastewater friends, and have the ability, and we budgeted to install a dump body on it to convert it into a very serviceable midsize dump truck. And then number 15, as you recall, we discussed this several work sessions back, you know, we are in cooperation with the county, as well as the other municipalities that are looking forward to having a locally owned and controlled recycle center, and this is the final resolution, and where we are a participant in an ADM grant, it's going to be 100% funded, it's a pass-through, meaning that if we receive it, and wink, wink, ADM's already said we're going to get it, but it is to purchase a piece of equipment for the MRF, which is, in this case, a forklift, and so basically what will happen is we will receive the funds, county will buy the piece of equipment, send us an invoice, we send in the funds, and we're done. And this is just the resolution that memorializes all that. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Council, any questions for Richard?
Thank you very much.
Is RHD the same folks that are doing the?
Arts Alley, yes, sir.
Parks Alley, so I'm assuming all is going good there, if you've got them on here for the Clock Corner, right?
There's no doubt, I would say that, I must say that for whatever reason, we must talked about it long enough, that our stakeholders along Arts Alley have been very patient, and there's been a lot of challenges on that project as far as trying to get some utilities addressed and everything else. I will say the work that's completed has been done very, very well, and I'm very satisfied with. We kind of had a pretty good meeting this past Friday about where we're trying to keep the pace and maybe pick it up. I think we're really going to start seeing that, because really, we hope, knock on wood, that every potential conflict has been discovered and we can keep moving. But he felt very confident that his goal is by the end of the summer to be complete, and as I told the mayor, my goal is that when we light the trees, the Arts Alley is completely lit up and ready for 100% use, so I didn't tell the contractor my date since I liked his date better, but I feel like that we are making progress, and the quality work, it's been done very satisfactory. Thank you.
Thank you. Nobody?
Hunter.
All right, well, Mayor, who's going to talk about number, Hunter, I guess you have six and seven. Nine is the irrigation pump. Bobby will talk about, or Tom. Okay. Want to come up, Tom?
And so my understanding for number nine is an additional $11,000 for an irrigation pump, which I understand was just an additional cost of the pump itself, is that right?
It's of the controls, it's an upgrade to the control system panel, basically the computer that runs the pump system. And you have as much information on it as I do, it was just a bump from $30,000, $65,000 to $41,000 because of the?
It's a force majeure. They, they're pushing it on us because that market changed.
Yeah.
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 It's a force majeure.
All right. Council, any questions on number 10, or number nine at this point? Thanks, sir.
It feels like a gouge, I know, but I had no control.
It's costly doing business sometimes, unfortunately.
Yes, thank you.
All right, and then I've got 13, intelligence-led policing sensor kits.
Any questions?
What's an intelligence-led policing sensor kit?
That is a conversation I'd rather have.
Okay, yeah, 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 look, not looking for anything private or proprietary in it.
It's just technology and its best practices, everything's above the board.
Got it.
Very useful stuff.
Got it.
I like the sensor y'all have out that flashes the blue lights when people are speeding.
Yeah, unfortunately, some people speed up, too, they think it's funny.
It actually scares me every time I see it, not that, for the speeding car in front of me, I'm going at a speed limit, obviously, but the car in front of me that's speeding scares me.
You and me both, still scares me, too.
Oh, all right, and then we got the joint task force agreement, we've done that before.
That's right.
And then, Mayor, you got the singular?
It's just like, some of these are not allowed.
Okay, all right. All right, nobody else has anything, we'll take a break and come back at 6:00 and get started.